Lance Cronin, County Council.
Erica Milo.
Jeff Mann, Arsenal Benton County Sheriff.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Johan Heda Prodon Equity Diversity Inclusion Coordinator.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
April Holland, Health and Compassion Industry Director.
Is there anyone else online that would like to introduce themselves before we move into the room?
Seeing none, let's have introductions in the room.
Pat Nair, City Mayor of those.
Welcome.
Maria Wills, IT Department.
Go ahead.
Paul Neufeld, Public Assistant Northern Congressman.
All right, well, we can move along then. Next up are comments from the public, and I have one person who signed in, which is Paul. Would you like to step up and talk to us? We have three minutes.
Good morning, I'd like to make a couple of comments regarding solid waste management. Tried to present it here as everyone knows. First point is, given some recent disclosures involving the CUP to expand the landfill, I think it became obvious to many people, newly to many of us, that the solid waste management in Benton County is quite out of date. I think it started in 1977. So I would urge the commissioners to initiate a new study by independent third-party experts. Marion in Shute's County have done this successfully, in my opinion, and I think we could follow their example and perhaps even use the companies they used to study the problem. Consider our options, both with respect to the landfill and with respect to collections and with respect to recycling. I think this would be advantageous to not only the citizens of Benton County, but to the administration as well. I'd like to point out that this is not the Oregon consensus initiative that's currently being undertaken. That's a different scope. What I'm talking about is a study of all our options in terms of how we handle solid waste management moving forward. Over a period of decades, it's a longer range, more comprehensive plan. And again, a key aspect of this request is that experts be brought to bear to study this problem and provide a formal report on our options that could then be considered by administration and the citizens. We could choose a direction forward and we could really work to address this fundamental issue in a longer-range manner rather than just kick the can down the road with some short-term solution. Second point is, given that, I would urge, and also related to it, I would urge the commissioners to, and I know this is a little unfortunate, but I would urge you to choose option two on Agenda Item 7.1 today. I don't believe that the agreement and order even contain a date certain for ending the agreement. It states 10 years, but I don't think there's a date certain specified in the agreement. And secondly, I think a 10-year window is too long. In normal times, when things are static, long-term planning is advantageous to the county and to the franchisee. I think we're moving into a period of flux with respect to solid waste management in Benton County, and I think it would be in the best interest of the administration and the public to cap this next iteration of the collection franchise agreement at the end of next year, December 31st of 2023. That would allow us to align with Columbus and the city of Corvallis, and hopefully by then, given item one, we would have a lot of input from the third-party experts about what our options are and make a more informed decision about the best path forward. Those are my suggestions. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. And next up, we will take comment from people online. I see some names already. If you have not already put your name in the chat, please do so if you would like to comment. First up online, I have Mark Jaeger.
Sorry, I'm out of chair. I hadn't put my name yet in. Need to comment. Thank you very much for your time. I'd like to support Paul's testimony with regard to, I have commented a couple of times to the commissioners about the need for having a shorter agreement for the garbage hauling franchise. You do in fact have the authority in your code to do that. So I would urge that you in fact do not agree with the staff recommendation to have a 10-year agreement. I would also like to point out that I understand that the staff's perspective is, well, we can have a 10-year agreement because we've put in this clause into the agreement that allows us to amend the agreement by July 1, 2024. However, I'd like to point out that the agreement does in fact require amendment and agreement by both parties before the agreement can be amended. So Republic could simply choose not to agree to include into an agreement or the franchise anything that might come out of either the city of Corvallis' negotiations or the Oregon consensus process. So I think that, while it sounds good on paper, I think there's a fatal flaw in that process. On a separate topic, I would like to comment that, given all of the energy and issues that are being brought up with regard to North Benton County, there has been some discussion about reconstituting the North Benton County Citizens Advisory Committee. And I understand secondhand that the Community Development Department has begun work on reconstituting that North Benton County Citizens Advisory Committee, and I would appreciate an update or report to the board in a formal way that would give us some understanding of what's happening in that regard, what the schedule might be, and what the process is for reconstituting that Citizens Advisory Committee. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if not, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mark. I apologize. I see now your comment. Thank you for being flexible.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
And next up, we have Debbie Palmer.
Okay, hang on a second here. Can you hear me all right? Okay. Good morning, Commissioners Ogero, Wise, and Malone. My name is Debbie Palmer. I am a Benton County resident, and I live out in Soap Creek Valley at 37340 Moss Rock Drive. I had the pleasure of meeting each of you at the Soap Creek Schoolhouse back in mid-April regarding the landfill franchise agreement. Today, though, I'd like to speak to you regarding the garbage hauling franchise agreement, the one between Benton County and Republic Services that is up for renewal. You've already received testimony from Mark Jaeger at the last meeting, both written and verbal, documenting how in Chapter 23 of the county code that you guys actually do have the ability to shorten the term of a collection franchise. I just wanted to remind you of that because as policymakers, this is within your power. I hope you have internalized this fact when it comes, when time comes for decision-making on this matter later on in today's meeting. But I also wanted to point something else out to you, something to maybe help sway you in that direction, i.e. in the direction of either holding off on renewing the collection franchise with Republic Services or at least shortening it until December 31st, 2023 in order to buy yourselves time for more community engagement on this complex issue. In the Agenda Tracker in your packet for today's meeting, under the 2040 Thriving Communities Initiative heading, under Environment and Natural Resources, the explanation of its focus area and vision states, quote, "Solid waste collection plays an important role in the recovery of waste materials. Increasing the recovery of waste materials will help conserve environmental resources and reduce the impact of materials." This is so true, so important, yet very little waste material recovery actually goes on under Republic Services' watch. So if you would just shorten the term of this collection franchise renewal or simply hold off on renewing it until you can bring it into alignment with Corvallis' collection franchise, this would give you and the Benton County community an opportunity to investigate just that, possible ways to incorporate materials recovery into it, possibly through opening up collection options to contractors other than Republic Services, who perhaps are more inclined to actually recover materials because Republic Services is not so inclined. Their most profitable sector, hands down, is landfills. They make a profit of 90 cents on the dollar landfilling garbage. It's not in their best interest to recover materials to keep them out of the landfill. It would be nice for the county to take actual steps in the direction of materials recovery rather than just pay lip service to it. We are in the 2020s. Climate change is real. Every action we can possibly take to help mitigate its impact is of value. This is one you guys can take. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Debbie. Next up, I have Ken Eklund, and I apologize if I mispronounced that.
Here I am. Good morning, Commissioners. So I'm Ken Eklund. I'm the Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Council and a citizen here in Benton County. So I agree with and I echo the comments you've heard from Paul Knutfeld, Mark Jaeger, and Debbie Palmer regarding the Agenda Item 7.1. I think the Commissioners should improve an interim agreement and renegotiate in collaboration with the city in December of 2023. And the reason is so that the county can begin to participate in these negotiations. You know, it just seems to me like currently the county is just abdicating its responsibility to, you know, abdicating its responsibility to its citizens and kind of inexplicably to my mind. So at the Solid Waste Advisory Council, we just finished developing some recommendations for sustainability grants. And I'm no lawyer, but many of those projects which receive county funds are technically illegal under the current franchise agreement because they're competitive, essentially, recycling programs. You know, they're diverting things from the waste stream, which Republic could say essentially infringes upon their agreement. So back to the main point, I would, I guess I would like the Board to explain why, since the county can sync up and add its efforts to the city of Corvallis, why it refuses to do so. You know, it, maybe the county could learn from such a collaboration with the city, you know, gain some experience essentially on how to essentially get into the, get with the negotiating table with Republic Services and kind of better represent the interests of county citizens, which I agree with Debbie and others. We're facing a time, I think, of change. I think there's a lot of interest on behalf of citizens of the county to look at how can we divert things from the waste stream so that they don't get landfilled. And right now, we're looking at kind of locking into a structure which really possibly prevents the county from doing so. So thank you. If you have any questions, that would be fine. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much, Ken. And next up, I have Kevin Katt.
Good morning, Commissioners. How you all doing? I, yes, I support what Paul Knutfeld has said, Mark Jaeger, Debbie Palmer, Ken Eklund. There simply has not been enough investigation and research done on the options. By rejecting a 10-year agreement and only executing through the end of 2023, you would be helping out our legal counsel, Vance Cronin. As he stated at the April 19th meeting, he has been trying for decades to sync up the agreements. Well, it's right in Chapter 23, point 310. And this would be an excellent time for our commissioners to use them and only execute an agreement through the end of 2023 so that other options could be looked at. So that's my request. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment today? Hearing and seeing none, we can move on in the agenda.
Commissioner Wise, just before we go, Erica, I'm seeing on the screen the impending reboot of our go-to.
If you look at this TV screen here.
Yeah, I'd hate for us to lose our transmission because the doggone software wants to review it right now.
Actually, I think it's on the laptop.
Thanks for bringing that up, Dan. That always pops up at the most inconvenient times.
I think it's a rule.
Yeah.
All right. Let's see. Oh, we, so we have review and approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Commissioners, no changes to the agenda.
All right. We'll consider that approved. We will move into our work session. First up, we have the COVID update with Suzanne Hoffman and April Holland. Welcome.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, all. I will jump right into it, if that's okay with you, Suzanne. Great. So it's been a couple weeks since we convened for a COVID update. During the last full week of data that we have, that's the week starting the 29th of May, we had 245 cases reported among Benton County residents. This corresponds to a case rate of 259 per 100,000, and it is a reduction from the previous week when we had 305 cases reported. Right now, we're in a plateau of high transmission. And our positivity rate, which we use to indicate, well, the positivity rate, as you all are well aware by this point, is the percentage of cases out of all the, sorry, the percentage of tests out of all the tests conducted that come back positive. And so if that rate is higher, that means more people who are positive are seeking out tests, and that positivity rate is quite high right now. It's 14.4%, which basically tells us there's a lot of COVID out there, especially considering that we conduct a lot of testing here in Benton County. And though we remain at this high plateau of reported cases, we can use that positivity rate, given how undercounted cases are, to show that there's still a lot of COVID out there, even if our numbers are going up and down a bit. And again, you know, overall, we're hearing across the state and in other areas that have been in a surge, that we hope to be reaching the top of the surge right around now. And we know, as I just stated, that cases are more undercounted than they ever have been. So we're also watching other means of tracking COVID activity, such as wastewater, for signs that we have, that the wave has peaked. And the signals remain high at this time, although they are a little lagged. So we're in, we're just going to say we're in a high plateau, and we're, we're going to keep watching the numbers, and we know that they're going to be coming down at some point. Looking at the CDC community levels, we, Looking at the CDC community levels, we are in the medium risk category, and we need to meet one of two criteria to move into that high-risk category, where universal indoor masking would be recommended per CDC guidance. One of those is the new, the number of new COVID-19 admissions per 100,000 population. That would need to be at 10 or higher to go into the high category. And right now, we're at four admissions per 100,000, and that's down from 5.4 from the last week of data. And the other criteria is the percentage of staffed beds in use by COVID patients. And that currently, that would also need to be at 10% or higher, and it's currently at 3.6%. I mentioned briefly that Benton County continues to do a lot of PCR testing, more than most other counties, and our, our testing rates are still second only to Multnomah County. But these two top testing counties no longer have the highest test, sorry, highest case rates. So we know that, that we've had high case numbers throughout the state, and our large numbers of testing have sort of bored that out in our county, in our county, maybe more so than in some other counties. However, we're seeing that, that, that those rates have increased in the counties that aren't doing as much testing as well. In terms of outbreaks, you know, we're really, our, the focus of the CD team now is on a high-risk settings. And the team has been very busy working on several complex outbreaks, including those in residential treatment facilities, long-term care facilities, and among some other vulnerable community members. So the impacts of COVID are, they do continue to disrupt not only daily lives, but people who are very vulnerable to severe illness. That said, you know, it is, with the vast undercounting of positive cases and the lower relative numbers of hospitalizations and deaths that we have seen, and I'd be remiss to say that, that, you know, that, I should say, that we are, this, this is not as severe a variant as we've seen previously with, with Delta and others. If we had a severe variant and undercounted testing, we would still likely see huge increases in hospitalizations and deaths. We know that hospitalizations are a lagging indicator, so as our cases are plateauing, our hospitalizations are continuing to increase somewhat. In the past couple of weeks, from May 23rd to June 6th, statewide hospitalizations increased about 15% from 278 up to 320 individuals. And then in Region 2, which includes Benton, Lynn, Lincoln, Polk, Marion, and Yam Hill Counties, hospitalizations increased almost 40% from 39 to 54 individuals in the, in the region. So, you know, as we know, these variants now are circulating, and they are much more transmissible than their predecessors. And we've probably all known someone or have had COVID, and, and that is not going to stop. However, you know, as we, as we encounter exposures, those exposures need not necessarily ensure infection, and an infection that comes with the risk of passing the virus along to someone else. So, you know, I wanted, I have my usual talking points, and I'm going to reiterate those, because I think it's so important to have those public health messages out there. You know, right now, people who wish to avoid an infection should consider wearing an N95 or a K95 in indoor public spaces right now. And then to, to reduce the risk of infection and the onward transmission to others, it's really important to stay up to date with vaccination. Three doses are really key for most. We know that we talk about a two-dose initial series and a booster, and then additional boosters for some, but we're seeing some language changes, and we may start to see the primary series truly as a three-dose series for the optimum protection. So those of, those of us out there who have not received that third booster dose, it's important to do that. Continue to choose outdoor activities in well-ventilated spaces, and use those rapid antigen tests before gatherings, meetings, when traveling, or if feeling unwell with, with allergies or, or COVID. It's always, it's sort of the game we play this time of year. Oh, and then, you know, I, I'll, I'll talk again about risks, about harm reduction. You know, wearing a mask in indoor public settings is a good idea right now, but disease prevention isn't all or nothing. Reducing your risk when it's higher can make a difference, whether we're talking about COVID, or monkeypox, or a summer cold, or food poisoning, you can always choose to make your plan a little safer. It's harm reduction, and harm reduction is public health. So, yeah, deciding to wear a mask when your risk is greater is a great idea, even if you don't choose to apply universally. Little, just a couple pieces of vaccine news. Couple weeks ago, the FDA announced approval of a EUA of a booster for children ages 5 to 11, and we've had a good turnout for that so far. And kids in that age group can be vaccinated five months after their second dose. And then the moment that so many of us with, with young kids have been waiting for COVID vaccination for young children is back on the horizon, and it's finally, it's looming close, the FDA's Vaccine Advisory Committee is going to meet June 15th and 16th, and then CDC's Advisory Committee is meeting right on its, on its heels on the 17th and 18th to discuss the data submitted for, for ages six months through five years. And there's, there's a Pfizer submission and a Moderna submission. And so on, on our end, we're working ourselves and with our partners to order vaccine, and we aim for many to begin offering those vaccinations the week of June 20. We have a lot more going on, but I'll stop there for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Or questions from Commissioners or staff? Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, April, I mean, you've described our situation as a high plateau, and I appreciate the hospitalization rates look at least okay at this time. And you may not have the information at this point, but what kind of trends were entering summer and outdoors and a relatively healthy season? What do you see coming this fall as far as what, what the virus might do and what vaccinations might be coming?
Thank you, Commissioner. Those are really great questions. And, you know, I think that, that what we can do is to look afield. So far, the, the new variants that have arisen have swept westward. And so we definitely keep, keep our eyes open, and we know that, you know, there have been some newer variants outside of the, the primary one that, that is, that is affecting most of the population right now. There are still relatives of the Omicron variant, but they don't seem to be making a huge impact in, in terms of causing big surges in areas that have recently had Omicron surges. So it's, we're waiting with, with bated breath and hoping for a season of calm before another wave comes along. Certainly getting, getting folks outside into some really well-ventilated air will, will help reduce transmission. And in terms of vaccination, we could see with, with the CDC's Advisory Committee, we could see something in the fall for a booster recommendation. Sort of modeled pretty closely over the, every June ASAP, the Advisory Committee for Immunization Practices decides on the formulation for the flu vaccine. And so it could be that this year, they similarly decide upon a regimen or schedule for COVID boosters. But that hasn't been determined yet. And in terms of Omicron-specific vaccine, those things are, are still up in the air. You know, there, there are folks in, in both camps, you know, some who say like, yes, let's go with, let's make sure that we develop an Omicron-specific vaccine to help reduce the likelihood that, that we'd even be able to acquire and incubate an infection. And others who say that, you know, the, the point of the vaccine is to avoid severe illness, prevent severe illness and, and death, and the current vaccines are, are doing that now. And if we continue to create new variant-specific vaccines for everything that come along, it may not be, we will just continue to run on the wheel. So we'll see what happens with it. I think, you know, there will, we may see also that, that adjustments are made, rather than, you know, have a, a little, a little bit of, of multiple things in, in a vaccine as we do with flu, based on what's going on. But we, we don't have anything set in stone at this point.
Okay. Thank you for that update. And is it accurate that, I think we're in the seventh wave, or whatever the number is, and each one seems to be less impactful, less severe, but maybe more transmissible? Is that an accurate description of the trends?
It's, you know, it's the pattern we've been seeing since, since Delta came along. I'd say we had a new severity with, with the Delta variant, and since that, we've, we've seen that more transmissible and less severe pattern. And I, I think it's kind of hard to say if we're, we're really seeing less severity, specifically because as time has gone on, we've had more people have protection through vaccination and through previous infections. And so that, that immunity that we're acquiring is going to help us as we encounter new forms of the, of the virus, new strains, until it doesn't, and I hope, I hope that doesn't happen. But, yeah, so, so it's, it's a little more nuanced than saying, you know, more transmissible and less severe.
Okay. Thank you, and really appreciate this information.
All right. Other comments or questions from Commissioners or staff?
Commissioner, I do see a question in chat from Mark Jaeger.
And I believe, I think April addressed that already. Did you want to say anything about that, April?
Sure. How does the county know about results of home testing? Sometimes we don't, is, is the, the short answer. Home, home test results, rapid antigen test results are not required to be reported. They do, do not always come from providers, and they do not always come from labs. People may choose their rapid, choose to report their rapid antigen results through the OHA COVID hotline, but it is one of the primary reasons that our cases are, our reported cases are, are just incredibly underreported at this time.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we move on to the next Agenda item? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you so much, April. We really appreciate you coming. All right. Next up, we have discussion of the Adair Urban Growth Boundary, and we have special guest with us, Pat Hare, Adair City Manager, and we also have some community development staff. Welcome, everyone.
I want to make a note that, there was a note in the chat that it's really difficult to hear the Commissioners, so I think we all need to work at speaking up.
Well, thank you very much for letting us come talk to you today. So again, my name is Pat Hare, and I'll let the others introduce themselves real quick.
Good morning, Commissioners. Darren Nichols, Benton County Community Development.
Patrick Depp, Associate Planner.
Greg Verrett, Deputy Director, Community Development.
I think that's important, that introduction right there, for what we're about to talk about, because we're trying to go after a UGB expansion that Adair Village has really sought after for many years, to get to a certain population to sustain a small community. But the difference, I think, this time is, is we're taking a different approach. We're, we're working as a team, we're collectively working with the county, with the state, and with the city. And to tell you the truth, a new path for me. I'm used to kind of ramrodding the process, you know, just getting it done. That's, that's kind of how I am. And I'm really pleased to be sitting here with these gentlemen that have helped me break down a proposed public engagement hearing schedule, so that we can really incorporate Benton County into this process, and the state, and all the agencies that would be involved or impacted by this. So I feel like we're, we're setting an example for a UGB process that I'm, I'm going to be really proud of, either way it goes. But what you have before you is a draft proposed schedule that we really wanted to put in front of you to get your feedback, to see if it's a process you can buy into. I'll be taking this, it worked out really well. My counsel will be seen as denied, but there is full support of the relationship that we're building right now. And so we wanted to kind of just go through this schedule. It is, I think, a little, it's, it's tight, and it's over a quick period, but I would like to point out that Adair Village has actually submitted this once before. We've worked on this for years. We've talked with the Commissioners, every single city manager's meeting that I've had with, we have promised stuff. So I hope that this is, our community has been talking about it. So even though it's a tight schedule, I think it's, you know, it's, patience is a virtue I'm working on, but I think that it also aligns with compliance. So I think this schedule does that for us. And so just kind of going through some of this, and you don't interrupt me at any point. But I just kind of wanted to go through this and just, and let people listening as well hear what our ideas are, to really hear what they have to say. And before I begin, one of the reasons that we're doing some of the open houses and public engagements is because when we get to the planning commission meetings, when we get to the Commissioners and City Council meetings, people are really only limited to very short periods of time, and they're only limited to what the code, you know, what it impacts the code. And so we're, we're looking at an approach where we let them get to speak about the, you know, we don't want to see that view, you know, this might affect this, things that really can't be talked about in those, you know, a planning commission and Commissioner meetings. So, so we have today, thank you so much for getting me on the schedule quickly and letting me speak. But today, we're just, we're putting this in front of you. And then next week, we're trying to get together as many of the agency folks as we can. We've got a lot of them already committed, and that'll include, again, DLCD, the state, of course, which we've been working with very closely, but other agencies, ODOT, the Forest Service, even, so lots of different people that this can impact, we're going to be getting at the table. And then lots of different departments within the county, as well as some of the different departments from Adair Village. And so we're going to try and do that next week. And then the two weeks from that, we want to get our two planning commissions together. We'd really like them to get in front of the public. And so that would be June 28th. We do a, a joint listening session and just kind of hear what the public's concerns would be, or anyone's concerns, agency concerns, and take that into consideration. And then we would come back and do a public open house, and that would just be informational and listening again at Adair Village City Hall or Berks, we haven't decided yet, but that would be July 12th. And then I, I thought this was neat, Patrick Depp came up with the idea of doing an informational kiosk at the Saturday Market in a public place. the idea of doing an informational kiosk at the Saturday market, in a public place, which I've not heard of really being done before. And just having a booth, answering questions. I'll try and make it out there with him, and so I can represent the city as well. And then on August 9, we would do another joint work session, so that our planning commissions could talk about the different things we've heard from the agencies, from the public, and really kind of just have that open-ended conversation. But again, we wouldn't have in that structured meeting. So after we did that, we would put our 35-day notice in to, on August 15, to the Department DLCD. And from that point, we would start scheduling our meetings. We'd do, on September 9, would be a staff report, and packets available for our planning commissions and to the public. And then on September 20, we would try and do the first joint actual public hearing. And that would be us, both our commissions together, we're hoping. We're hoping we build that relationship throughout the summer. And then on September 27, we would have the second joint public hearing, and that would be the city and county. So we're not putting them right in front of the public to have to be a decision-maker. That's what we're trying to avoid. And then having to go back through the process. So they'll have that all up front. And then October and November would, when we would like to take it to the city council and the board of commissioners. And again, hoping to do that in a joint public setting. And so we really just kind of wanted to put this in front of you, and see what your thoughts were, see if you thought we needed to add something to this. And is there anything you guys have to say?
I'm just going to say thanks to Pat, and to the City of Adair Village for being flexible, and working with us to jointly put this draft together for your reaction. I think what you have in front of you is ambitious. It's very much a draft. So the way that we'd like to approach this, you know, an urban growth boundary amendment can be a highly technical exercise. There's a lot of facets, there's a lot of data, it can be confusing. What we're hoping is that the way we've approached this, is it's more of a conversation with the community and the surrounding neighbors about our vision for growth and development in Benton County. And so we're hoping that by doing this, we will satisfy the technical, kind of data-driven parts of it, but we'll also satisfy the community conversation portion of it. And by the time we get back in front of you, we'd like you to feel really good about both of those parts of the expansion. So I'll just add one more thing, and then stop. The way that we've chosen to staff this, is to ask Pat Deppe, who is our Small Communities Planner, to serve as staff to the city, and to the City Planning Commission, and the City Council, and ask Greg Verrett to serve as staff to the county, County Planning Commission, and the board. That way, each of the respective perspectives are represented. And while we're coordinating, we're not, we don't want to conflate the viewpoints of the city and the county. And I think that will help us to do both of those things simultaneously, coordinate closely, but also accurately reflect what we hear in the community conversations.
Yeah, what Darren said was very important, you know, trying, there's a data side to this. And believe me, I want to tell you a lot of things right now. But we're trying to keep it to coming up with a process to answer all those questions and stuff. And I know I've spoke to a lot of that data before, but that's what we're trying to do this today.
All right. Thank you. Any comments from Greg? I have a couple of questions. And looks like it might still be hard for us to, for people to hear us speaking. We'll try to speak up. First of all, I assume that it's okay, it's not like a conflict of interest or anything, to have Pat on one side and Greg on the other, since you both work for Benton County. Just wanted to double check.
No, we do this with the smaller communities.
Perfect.
And yeah, and I point out in advance, now, as too, as the county and city both decided to do this legislative.
Great. So let's see. My first question, so in your letter to us, you mentioned the possibility of having two informational meetings, and then also something at the farmer's market. And then I wasn't sure, maybe I missed it, are you still planning on doing two open houses in Adair, or just one?
Yeah, so I think in our schedule here, we have the July 12 public open house. And actually, I think the other ones are joint work sessions, but those are, there still can be public comment at those. So I guess I see those as kind of being that.
Okay. So I like what you said about having an opportunity for people to give their opinions when, where they don't have to stick to, you know, the certain criteria. So, I mean, I just, as one person, think it's great to have more than one of those, if possible, because, you know, someone might have to work that night, or be on vacation or something. And then, I'm not sure if you have the bandwidth, or if you've thought about this, but will you have the ability to have like a portion on a website anywhere that people can go to, to look up the information?
Yeah, we can definitely do that. I think we already talked about that, didn't we? Yeah, having it on the county side, and then the city side, and it'll have the full application.
Perfect.
Materials.
Yeah, the staff reports, go ahead.
Darren, excuse me, if you folks could talk more directly into the mic, we're having a problem with folks that are on GoTo, being able to hear.
Yeah, well, one of the things that I wanted to do after this meeting, now that we've come to you, and seeking advice and direction, is get with Pat, and kind of go over a little timetable of what we need to do. One of the things was to set up a portal onto the city's website, and the county's website. I've seen it done in other cities, where as stuff is being compiled, and materials are being put out there, they will, you know, for people that missed a meeting, we can always point them right to the website and say, you know, these are all the materials that we're at right now, that we've talked about, if you have any questions. And then, also, we talked about the two, well, reach out maybe to the farmer's market, is to have actual materials and stuff, because people may know somebody that may be interested, but just isn't there. So I thought that was a good place, you know, people from Corvallis that might even be interested. And they could actually walk away with the material as well. Just a description of what a UGB is, and what the process is. And again, you know, I think both me and Greg are going to be, our contact information's going to be there, so we're always going to be able to answer questions.
Great. I think that's, that sounds really good. And then the only other thing I thought of was maybe having like, an online survey, that people can respond to if they would like, if you have that capability. And then I guess I also wanted to just mention, you did talk about a tight timeline. And I would just encourage you to, I mean, I think you're good at this, Pat, but staying on track, but also not being afraid to be flexible if and when you need to. You know, if something comes up with the public, let's not be afraid to just hit the pause button for a short time and address it, and then, yeah, move on. Commissioner Malone?
Thank you. Similar comment here, Nancy, is have the opportunity for more public engagement, maybe after the farmer's market, mid-July, there's a little bit of time before your next, you get into more formal meetings. But seems like, just, well, I couldn't make that meeting, or questions come up at a public meeting that needs some research, and maybe more, more discussion. And like I've talked to you before, Pat, is having this satellite city not too far away, and making sure we have ways to get between Adair and Corvallis area without a car, whether it's, I know I've talked to you about coordinating a pass within Adair Village to, thinking about the connection south to Corvallis, and then the transit's already an option, and see if we need to increase frequency, or just, I drive past Adair pretty regularly, and there's a lot going on there. And so the old schedule may not fit the new reality. Appreciate this effort, and I think maybe aggressive timeline, but have to get something down on paper, and maybe it changes a little bit, and maybe it nailed it with this effort. But I appreciate you laying out the steps, and what's, how this is going to unfold.
Okay. Commissioner Ojoa?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and suggestions. One is whether or not you will be including Oregon State University, and especially OSU Forests, in that interdepartmental meeting, since they're also in a butter at Adair Village. I'm getting head nods, yes, good. They're not listed in your letter, so I just wanted to check. Secondly, I would suggest that you might want to do that session at the farmer's market prior to holding an open house, because I think that that will give a lot more people notice that that open house is going to exist. And I know that from abundant experience with the county, people have to hear about something several times before it really sinks in. So I think that that might be a wise choice to flip those. And last, I want to echo, or point that Paul Netfield made earlier, that if the North Benton County Community Advisory Committee was up and running, this is something that they would have already talked about, thought about, and a lot of the community in rural Benton County would already be aware of the potential for Adair Village UGB expansion. So I think this, once again, points out the need to revitalize that North Benton Community Advisory Committee, so that we can have that kind of input from community members up in the north part of the county on a more regular basis. It'll lessen the, that hurdle of getting people's attention.
All right. Other comments or questions? Seeing none from up here. Any other comments or questions down there?
I just want to confirm that Stephen Fitzgerald is included in the invite list for the 14th. It's a pretty long list. I know Pat's letter was kind of abbreviated, but I think we've got 25 or 30 different agencies and organizations. And that is not exclusive. So if there are others that should be included, or if we need to have a follow-up interagency meeting, I think this, this sketch is very flexible in the ways that you've asked for it this morning.
So I'm assuming that some of the federal land management partners will also be there. You mentioned Forest Service, but Fish and Wildlife Service likely be interested as well?
O D N W, yeah, we're trying to get them at the table. I talked with them.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments or questions before we move on? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
And what an exciting project. All right. We are going to take a five-minute break, and then we will come back for our business meeting. business meeting. Okay, and then I need to unmute the phone, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. We will move on to our business meeting, starting with the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve or change anything on the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, that will bring us to proclamations. And the first proclamation we have is in the matter of proclaiming June 13th through 17th, 2022, as Cascadia Rising 2022 Exercise Week in Benton County.
And I see on the agenda list Brian Lee.
Hi, this is Sierra, the emergency planner at the sheriff's office. I'm standing in for Brian this morning. Still morning? Hi, thank you for having me. I would like to go ahead and read the proclamation if that's okay with everybody. Okay, so in the matter of proclaiming the week of June 13th as Cascadia Rising 2022 Exercise Week in Benton County, whereas the threat of a Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake will greatly impact the entire region, including the residents of Benton County, Oregon, and the FEMA Department of Homeland Security has determined a Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake as the biggest natural disaster threat. When individuals take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, the chance of survival and return to normalcy following a disaster is greatly increased. And Cascadia Rising 2022 has been given the designation of a national-level exercise. A Cascadia Subduction Zone event would cause massive disruption to the entire country, and the Benton County Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Division partners with federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies to plan, train, and exercise the EOC team to be prepared for all hazards. And residents, businesses, and visitors of Benton County, Oregon are urged to plan ahead for all disasters and encourage their family and their friends to also do so by participating in annual readiness events and drills. And this regional exercise will be used to test a variety of plans, training, and lessons learned. And the Benton County Board of Commissioners, that the week, now therefore proclaimed by the Benton County Board of Commissioners, that the week of June 13th through 17th, 2022, be the Cascadia Rising 2022 Exercise Week, and encourage all community members, businesses, and visitors to develop their own emergency preparedness plans and practice drills.
I'll move to proclaim the week of June 13th through 17th, 2022, as Cascade Rising 2022 Exercise Week in Benton County, Proclamation P. 2022, Day 011.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Sierra.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll read it.
All right, next up, the next proclamation is in the matter of proclaiming June 2022 LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and we have with us Johan.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm excited to read our Pride Month proclamation for you all. So I'll begin now. This June jurisdictions around the world are celebrating their lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, and queer LGBTQ+ community members, and what is commonly known as Pride Month. We note that many other sexual orientations and gender identities are included in the plus section, including but not limited to questioning asexual, pansexual, non-binary, two-spirit, and genderqueer people. This year, Benton County joins jurisdictions in celebrating all LGBTQ+ people who live, work, learn, play, and worship in our community. In June of 1969, an uprising began when LGBTQ+ community members were being harassed and harmed by police at the Stonewall Inn in New York City. To commemorate the act of resistance against oppression, the Pride Celebration was created. Over the past 53 years, Pride has become a celebration of community perseverance and survival worldwide. Pride embraces artistic expression through multiple mediums: visual art, poetry, spoken word, drag performances, and many more. Pride helps people explore their gender identities and sexual orientations and allows straight and cisgender allies to express support and community. LGBTQ+ people have always been part of our community, but they have not always had support or safety to be out. In the 1950s and 60s, gay people state and nationwide faced persecution and sterilization. In 1976, a group of Alice Gazette Times featured an article about a gay woman wanting to marry, and gay readers were unhappy if the papers expressing family-friendly material, even though the women were expressing her desire to have their own families. That same year, the First LGBTQ+ Organization began at Oregon State University. Over the years, OSU students, faculty, and staff have faced a variety of challenges and celebrations, and played critical roles in advancing equity and community. Many OSU students and Benton County community members had to face legislative actions and measures meant to undermine their autonomy of LGBTQ+ people and make them second-class citizens. One of these measures was 1992's Measure Nine, which would have forbade all public entities, including educational institutions, from giving monies that support homosexuality. This measure would have shut down LGBTQ+ organizations statewide and further isolated the vulnerable population. But organizations such as Carvallos's chapter of the Lesbian Avengers fought back against Measure Nine, and it was defeated. Benton County has a history supporting LGBTQ+ community members. Carvallos and Oregon State University have had have been home to formal organizations since 1976, allowing individuals to find a sense of home and comfort. In 2004, the Benton County Board of Commissioners allowed marriage licenses to be distributed to same-gender couples. Shortly after, Measure 36 banned same-gender marriage, but Benton County voters made clear they support marriage equality. They voted against the measure. The ban was in place in 2014, when a judge found the amendment unconstitutional and marriages began that same day. Legislation has continues to harm LGBTQ+ community members, especially contemporary actions that harm trans and non-binary youth. Pride Month is a time to reflect upon our history, support LGBTQ+ communities, and celebrate our identities and communities welcome for all sexual orientations and gender identities. While we celebrate the lives of LGBTQ+ community members, we must also be committed to saving their lives. Benton County is proud to offer gender-affirming care to patients and be hosting a variety of LGBTQ+ trainings for county staff for Pride Month. Benton County is committed to equity for all, supports everyone honoring their sexual orientations and gender identities during Pride Month every day of the year. Therefore, let be proclaimed that June 2022 is LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and all community members are invited to celebrate.
Move that we proclaim. Getting a lot of echo.
Can I show your speaker off?
It was off. Oh. My bad. Sorry about that. Old habits really do die hard. The little mic was off, but the main one was on. My apologies. I would move to proclaim this month as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Benton County, Proclamation Number 2022-12.
Oh, seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. And I'll just say that I am happy that we are celebrating this month, and let's not forget to celebrate all year long. But in honor of celebrating Pride Month this month, I probably can't see this, I got my little rainbows on my nails. All right. Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Johan. Any other comments or questions before we move on?
We are really excited to have the trainings. The first one will be offered this Friday, I think at 10. Need to double-check that time. And that will be LGBTQ Q and A. So if you have any questions about many of the different terms I shared today, that'll be a great session to attend, and I'll send a reminder email about that later this afternoon. Additionally, there was supposed to be a proclamation for celebrating Juneteenth coming today, but we had an issue with the agenda checklist while I was at a conference last week. So I'll be coordinating with Johan to see if we can get that in sometime soon.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time today. All right, that will move us along to old business. First up, discussion and decision to approve Order Number D. 2022-044, renewing the solid waste collection franchise agreement. And we have with us Daniel Reddick. Welcome, Daniel.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for your time today. So this matter is coming back to the board after it came before the board on May 17th. The board directed staff to revise a drafted board order and franchise agreement to include a specific deadline for amending the franchise agreement, which was July 1st, 2024. So that detail has been included in the draft board order and the draft franchise agreement for your review today.
Thank you. County Council, would you like to say something?
Just briefly, Sean Edmonds, general manager for Republic Services, is amongst the audience. And I know Sean wanted to speak to just a specific issue with regard to the language that Daniel had provided. So I think Sean wanted to speak just to one specific topic.
Thank you. Welcome, Sean.
Welcome. Good morning. Yeah, the first one, Daniel, is just a it's a technical correction. If you can just refer to us as the same legal entity in the franchise agreement, Republic Services, Inc., is it's a different legal entity. So if you can just from a naming convention, if you can just use that same name, we should be good to go there. And
Sean, that the Allied Waste Services of Corvallis, Inc., is that correct?
Yeah, you use Allied Waste Services of Corvallis without the "Inc." on the first page. And if you can and if you want to utilize just Republic Services and the rest of the document, as you have already done, that's fine, just as long as the "Inc." is not there.
Okay, thanks.
And then the last thing real quick is just that, you know, we completely support Daniel's language, and I wanted to assure everybody that we're we hear you, we're listening. You know, we look forward to this partnership. And I just want to ensure that when the timing is right, of course, that we have the opportunity to sit back down and have some additional discussions with the county surrounding, you know, some of the overall kind of practicality, feasibility, and the timing of the future recommendations. As all of you know, you know, some of the Oregon consensus process that we're going through, it's somewhat open-ended. So of course, we would expect that, as we have done in the past, that we can have a very collaborative session, and we have the opportunity to sit down and discuss that and make sure that everybody's on the same page and that we can all move forward. And that's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Vance, do you see any issue with just getting the name consistency part?
No, I don't. If your decision is to approve the language, approve the order, then I would suggest that the motion be to approve the order and franchise agreement with the name change as specified at the hearing. That will allow staff to correct that front page and send it out for signatures without having to come back or having to try for adding the specific wording into a motion.
Sure, thank you. Comments or questions from commissioners?
A couple of questions. I know that what we're dealing with in a big way, again, as I've mentioned before, is a question of trust. We've worked with the local representatives of Republic Services here in the community for many, many years, and have developed a working relationship of trust. So but there are many community members that have not been party to that. And so it looks very different from the outside. And I am struck also by the fact that we are definitely in a time of real change when it comes to solid waste management with the new framework for recycling that's been adopted by the state legislature and being developed as we speak by Department of Environmental Quality at the state level with input from many community members. So a 10-year hauling franchise is long. And I'm also wondering a bit about the language that we have in our code and in the agreement about hauling and recycling, and whether or not the small ventures that we are putting together through our grant program do conflict with our own code and language, as was raised earlier by one of our community members, just to make sure that we are not acting contrary to our own code and processes. So I just wanted to raise some of those discussion points. And lastly, one of the things that's nagging at me is that, yes, we want to coordinate with the city of Corvallis. I don't know whether we can truly synchronize negotiations about hauling franchise, but rural residents are different. And if you have a mile-long driveway, you're not going to feel very comfortable about putting out that can of, you know, yard waste or compost out at the curb. It doesn't make sense. Recycling-wise, sometimes it doesn't make sense to roll that cart or drive it down to the street when it's on the highway. So I have I just want to point out that we do have to work with Corvallis, but also be proactive on behalf of our own county residents because the settings are not the same. So while we want to encourage progressive solid waste management in both environments, the means might be might be different. So I want to encourage us, whatever we do moving forward, to be very thoughtful and more strategic about it and not just, as someone suggested, abdicate our own leadership as the county with respect to solid waste management in favor of what the city's doing, or sit back and be complacent.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before I share my two cents?
Yeah, I had questions on the timetable where we go first and then say we're at sometime next year, we sync up with the agreement that Corvallis comes up with. So I guess my question would be, what kind of flexibility do we have? I mean, do not do a full 10-year agreement. I know there's language in there that Sean Edmonds mentioned about conversations, negotiations sometime next year to iron out differences. But I guess a question for you, Vance, or Daniel, what kind of options do we have moving forward? I guess the other part about the timetable is Republic's been operating without an agreement since the first of the year. And so, I mean, the timetable just seems less than ideal.
All right. Was that was there a question for council there?
What are our what options, if any, do we have? Is this kind of a yes or no at this point, as far as the 10-year?
You know, is that a yes or no? So you want me to take this one, Daniel? Yes. So when this came for the board back in So, when this came for the board back in April now, staff nor I saw any basis for recommending less than a 10-year option for the franchise agreement. The code does indeed call for an option to have something less than 10 years if there's, you know, a basis for less than a 10-year provision. At this juncture, what we've put before you is, yes, it's technically a 10-year term, but it's designed to get a hauler franchise in place until we are able to, in that first half of 2024, incorporate new elements into an agreement that would be for whatever period of time you choose. It could be, if Corvalis is five or 10, it could be for five or 10. Right now, technically, you can have it for two years, you can have it for 22 years. I think it, so yes, the answer is you can be flexible. If that's a direction you go, I would posit that Republic is probably going to have comments because, remember, they're the other partner of the franchise. And it's a business, and I have no idea, but I suspect they have thoughts on how they would operate under a shorter franchise term. So there is that piece to consider as well. But at this point, what you're being asked to approve is a 10-year agreement with a mandatory opener in no later than, what, two years now?
Thank you.
Can I ask for one clarification?
Is it a yes or no? No.
Maybe it is. So at that re-opener, we could indeed change the term of the overall hauling agreement?
Yes. And candidly, that has sort of been the expectation that when it's reopened, that term would be changed to tentatively sync up with Corvalis and Filomena.
That would make sense. And do you have any sense for what the city of Corvalis is thinking about in terms of the length of hauling agreement at this time?
Okay, Daniel. She's asked a question beyond my purview. This is for you.
Yeah, I haven't received information to that specificity. I know it's been a 10-year agreement in the past, but I believe that they're beginning those conversations around now to look at what details are going into their agreement.
Thank you, Daniel.
And I'll just mention, too, it's something that the joint city-county leadership talked about at our little leadership meeting that we held the other day. So it's on the radar, and it's something that I believe communication will continue flowing on. In addition to that, let's see if I can streamline my thoughts here in a way that makes sense. So we held a public hearing. We directed staff to revise the franchise agreement. Staff has done so. We put in there the re-opener in 2024. And I guess the whole reason, so currently, they're operating under an expired franchise agreement, which I don't think is best practice for the city or them, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to get it renewed, but then have the re-opener in 2024. And as been previously mentioned, I think in 2024, that can be the time when we take a deeper dive with, you know, do we want 10 years? Do we want a different timeframe? What is good for county residents? You know, should we match up exactly with the city, or should we change those things? I think that is the time to get into that level. As of right now, I think we just need to make sure that we're not operating under an expired franchise. And I appreciate, I appreciate all the public comments that have been made. I appreciate Sean's comments about wanting to make sure that we have additional discussions and the intent for Republic to be at the table. That, I believe, is our intent, too. That is my intention, is that we can have those conversations and make sure that we are kind of all on the same page. All right. So with that, any other comments, questions, or would anyone like to make a motion?
Commissioner, we'd like to point out there's a couple of questions that just came up in the chat function.
So I wonder, okay, so I see, can Vance please explain the legality of a re-opener? Vance, do you have just like a really quick?
So if, so this gives us an opportunity to really address what Commissioner Ozerow was talking about, trying to fold in Corvalis and Filomena elements, but in a way that fit the rural area. This would give you six months, Benton County and Republic, six months to do just that. I think the last thing we want to do is have Corvalis and Filomena finish up their negotiations, say, the last week of December, and us be under a gun to incorporate something without any thought or any conversations. We also are in the risk of putting ourselves in the exact same position, which is the franchise having expired while we're dealing with a renewal. So it's a grace period to allow us to have conversations with Republic about programs, items, and services.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Commissioner Ozerow, please do.
I would move to issue the board order and franchise agreement as written.
And we have someone who is unmuted, and you can please mute yourself.
I would move to issue the board order and franchise agreement as written, except for the reference to Republic Services and Allied Waste Incorporated corporate name, as mentioned by Sean Edmonds in the comment, granting the solid waste collection franchise renewal to the applicant with the re-opener as stated, only in June 1st, 2024.
Oh, I'll second that.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Do we, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Daniel.
Thank you.
All right. Any other, actually, okay, I was going to say, any other comments or questions before we move on? I think we are good to move on to the next agenda item. New business, we have management and confidential employee compensation, and we have Tracy Martineau with us, our human resources director. She is here in person with us. Welcome, Tracy.
Thank you, and good morning, commissioners. It's great to see you in person once again. Several weeks ago, I came before you at, I believe it was a goal-setting session. At that time, I gave you a history of compensation for non-represented employees. I also reviewed some current economic and market information with you. And as it stands right now, the market forces and workforce shortages are really driving the need for us to make some adjustments to individual pay as well as the salary ranges this July. And so I'm here today to ask for your approval to this effect, to approve the ECI adjustment effective July 1, 2022, for non-represented employees' salary ranges and for individual pay based on the ECI that will be published the last week of July of 2022. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you might have. I believe Rick Greger is also on hand if you should have any financial questions.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments? And hello, Rick.
Just that you did include in your packet for us a cap on what that total increase would be, no more than 7%. So I think that that's an important element to note also, and the fact that that is less than cumulatively our representative employees with AFSMI will get for that comparable period.
Thank you for highlighting that, Commissioner. Yes, but you would be more comfortable with a cap just in case. It is not expected the ECI will come close to that, but it does for the governor.
All right. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, Tracy, what's the time period? You talk about the ECI coming out into July. This would take effect 1st of July for one year or what?
That's correct, Commissioner. The ECI that will be published the last week of July will be for the 12-month period ending June 30.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wise, I do have several questions and comments.
Sure.
One comment is just to address the question that Commissioner Malone just shared, and he specifically said, is this good for one year? And I want to make sure that the board is clear that this, any increase that would go into effect now would be moving forward. So it's not just for one year and then things revert back. It's an ongoing expense that the county would incur. So that's number one. Tracy, also, if you could give the board an idea of how many employees we're talking about that are under the non-rep designation, so that they have an idea of how much of our workforce will actually be impacted by this.
It's approximately 130-something positions or employees that we're talking about are not fully staffed at the moment. So that is, if we were fully staffed, it would be about 130-something.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'm sorry. This is a question for Rick. Do you have a cost estimate, what this would, what the impact would be for the county budget?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Obviously, you know, we would, you know, the actual cost, once we had the percentage in terms of what we would actually go to, and understanding, you know, what positions were vacant versus ones that were not. It depends on, again, from the percentage standpoint, what I have created is a range of anywhere between $700,000 for 4% up to approximately $1.4 million for 8%. So somewhere in between is what that cost would end up being for the 138 employees that Tracy was referring to.
Great. Thank you.
Although we do have a cap at 7% in this particular proposal, so we wouldn't even hit that high end of the range.
We fully expect that what we're going to see is more in the range of 5%. Maybe give or take a point or two or three, but no higher than that.
Yeah. And I apologize, Commissioner, I was sure you were exactly right. I should have factored in the cap at 7%. I initially had done a four to eight, not knowing where we'd be, but to correct myself on that, no more than $1.2 million.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve adjusting the non-represented employee salary ranges and individual pay effective July 1, 2022 by the ECI for the 12-month period ending June 30, 2023, I think, 2022. If it starts July 1, 2022...
But it's the ECI for the previous 12-month period, so it's the ECI ending...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. For the period ending June 30, 2022, not to exceed 7%.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
And thank you, Rick. All right. That brings us to other. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing and seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:41 a.m. Have a great day, everyone.